To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the world with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll?
Trustee Guyer.
Here.
Trustee Spurling.
Here.
Trustee Baumann.
Here.
Trustee Youngerman.
Here.
Trustee Marisak.
Here.
Alright, and we're all here this evening. Rolling into public participation, we, the first opportunity is public comment. Is there anybody here this evening that wishes to address the board on any topic? Now would be your time. Go ahead. Kendall? If you can just come down, state your name and address, and then floor's yours.
Took care of that already.
Nice.
I just wanted to come, I've been a... My name's Kendall Wilson. I'm at 2322 Stacy Court. And as long as I've lived here, the Public Works Department has always done a fantastic job. I want to let you guys know that. With the storm that we had, my mailbox got kind of plowed in and my mail wouldn't be delivered. So I called the department and literally within an hour, a crew was out and I got my mail that afternoon. So I just wanted to come in publicly before the board, go on record in saying what a great job they've done.
That's awesome. Thanks Kendall, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Alright, any other public comment? Go ahead. Welcome. Just state your name and address.
Of course. Regina Jungles, address 237 Parker Court. With that being said, I did write some board members in regards to our street on Parker Court. Unfortunately, since we have opened the dead end of Parker Court, we've had so much traffic in the morning and in the afternoon. And I did bring pictures because I wanted to show you guys what we deal with on a daily basis. We have several, several elderly's living on our street. I have my own mother that lives next door who's been a resident of Montgomery for over 70 years. I have the DeLeones across the street who have been residents of Montgomery for about 75 years as well. The street has now turned to a one-way facing the school. You know, absolutely blocking all driveways, as you'll see in the pictures. Heaven forbid if any of the elderly's need to have emergency access, there will be no way anybody would be able to come through until all of that traffic is gone. It takes approximately 45 to an hour to get that traffic through the street. We did close, we did open, I should say, the village opened the dead end, I want to say about approximately eight years ago for the school, for Crook School, which is Aurora Bay School. Again, every resident there is a Montgomery resident. We cannot, we cannot back up. All the driveways are backed up, are blocked, everybody going on a one-way. We did have an officer after the letter, the chief of police did send an officer. He did state he was going to get back to the sergeant, but he saw, and he did agree with me, there was no way that we were going to have any kind of emergency cars come through. My mother has a nurse. She couldn't get exit out. She has a nurse that comes in on a daily basis. She couldn't get out. When you try to back up against the traffic, you have people coming out of their cars, parents coming out of their cars angry at you because you're asking them to back it up. Back it up, we gotta move the cars. I understand, as I told them, I'm a parent as well. We all want to get our child. But it's gotten ridiculous where they're now being very verbal abusive, abusive to other residents. Again, I'm asking that the board, that the director of Public Works, or not Public Works, Public Worlds, and I'm asking the board that we close Parker Court again as a dead end. If I have to ask all the residents, they will petition, as we did prior, to ask them to close it up again. Again, it's only been open for seven years. If we can close it, that would be great so that, you know, the residents can come in and out on a daily basis, as well as keeping the children of Crook School safe. Because when the parents can't get there fast enough in front of the school, the kids start walking in between these cars. And I'm telling you, it's a two-way street and it's turned to a one-way. There's cars, you can't even cross the street. That's how bad it is. I invite you all, Monday through Friday, to please come to Parker Court at approximately, you can do it in the morning when they drop off their kids, or around 3:15. And you will see, you won't, it goes all the way up to the street. At the stop sign of Parker and Cack, these cars are backed up. You will not be able to get into Parker Court. That's all I have to say.
What time is drop-off usually in the morning?
It's usually around nine o'clock, but they have early, where the kids go in early for breakfast and everything. So you have that, usually around eight o'clock. And then the backup is all the way till about nine, nine fifteen. And then when your dismissal starts at 2:45 and doesn't end till approximately quarter to four. You'll see, you'll, I mean, the officer, if you was, speak with the officer, he saw it as well. He tried at first to go to car to car, but it was overwhelming for him. He stopped and it was like, he had to stand on one side of the road just so they wouldn't. And once they went around him, they went back to, you know, making it a one-way right behind him. It was overwhelming for him.
Okay. And this is both morning and afternoon?
Yes. Not only in winter, springs, and in spring, fall, summer. You have the summer school, you know, it's really bad. Again, president, village president, I invite you to go over there at 3:15, see if you can get through.
Can I ask a clarifying question? In the photos, there's two rows of cars. Are some of those cars parked?
No.
Those are, it's like a double stacked lane?
Yes.
And it's a two-way street?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's what I mean. They're both going all in the same direction. None of the cars are parked. The officer actually gave me a suggestion to possibly put a truck in the middle of the street so they can't go that way. But then again, you can't have residents get out of their driveway. There's no way we can get out of the driveway. My son goes to work at three o'clock. I mean, you don't know how many times parents got off the cars cussing him out because he's asking them to get, to not block the driveway so he can just turn to go up the hill. He can't do it. So, but again, you're all invited to come and see.
Your house?
237 Parker Court.
What's the address, ma'am?
237 Parker Court. My mother lives at 235 Parker Court.
Okay.
Which one are you? There's like eight houses, it looks like, come there?
I think there's more than eight houses. We actually just had another house built on that street, just recently.
Nine, ten, yeah, okay. Is there any way to have any background information or notes? They say it was open, it opened up seven years ago? Any conversation about who, why, what, why the decision was made?
We'll have staff pull that.
When it was dead-ended, where did it dead-end?
Right there at the school.
At the school, it was closed?
Right before the last house, there was a dead end and you couldn't cross the school. There was only a little pathway that the kids would walk to school. It was a complete dead end.
And you've had no luck with the school, if I remember correctly?
Unfortunately not. They, you have, literally you have parents coming out of their cars saying it's school property, which is, we all know it's not. And then you have the school saying it's not, it's not our problem, it's a police problem.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
We'll look into it. Thanks Regina, appreciate it.
Hi, my name is Felipa DeLeon Martinez and I'm a caretaker for my parents, which I lived at 247 Parker, I think probably since I was four years old. And my dad is handicapped in a wheelchair. And my dad has countless times have almost gotten hit or got caught in the crossfire because they've made that on Parker, they have made it literally a one-way and it's a two-way street. And I can't tell you how many times, you know, just my dad checking the mail. My dad on his side doesn't have a sidewalk, so if he wants to go from the front to the garage, he has to use the street or try to go through the grass. But with the wheelchair, it's sometimes difficult. He can get stuck and what have you, so it's just easier for him. But his gun, they come flying down the street. And I, you know, there's a stop sign right there at the corner, so that's how fast they gun it to go down the street to the school, if they're the very beginning ones. My, the other day, you know, as we were, I have my camera too with pictures on it as well. But when, you know, I was taking pictures, you know, the parents are so disrespectful. You know, they're giving me the finger and, you know, they're like waving at me like, here we go. And I'm like, oh my gosh, you know? And the next day, when the police was there, they're still, you know, like kind of waving at us. And the police was in front of my parents' home. And when they seen, you know, obviously the police, they, you know, then they're trying to get back into the right lane. But as soon as they passed the police, they went and made it a two-way lane again. And, I mean, the police just said, I can't give everybody a ticket, I can't give tickets out. But it's like, you clearly see all these cars just disrespected your authority and are, you know, making. So I would like to also make that again. My mother has been in and out of the hospital. And she did have an emergency where I had to get her to the hospital. It wasn't a life and death, but I needed to get her there. And I could not get out. And even if I had called 911, they would not have been able to comfort my mother. My quickest reaction is to get my mom in the car and get her to the hospital. I couldn't get her to the hospital because the cars would not, they, I literally, I can't get out. You know, I would hit them head-on if I, I mean, I just can't. You just cannot get out. And so that really needs to be addressed and I would, we need to close that back. I've called the school numerous times and the school, the school principal says, it's not my problem. You're going to have to talk, call the police. It's the village problem. You got to go to Montgomery. And, you know, my parents, they've lived there, like I said, for many, you know, like 75 years. And so for them to have to deal with this, you know, my parents are, you know, 92. You know, so we got to close it. I mean, if the school's not willing to work with us, they're not. We just need to close it for the safety, not only, and we have kids in and out of the traffic. It's just, it's crazy. If, you know, if you guys could come and look, you'll see what we're talking about.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What was the pattern, before Parker was opened, what was the drop-off and pickup pattern, do you know?
They would come through.
Melrose.
Melrose?
Melrose.
Melrose, correct.
So was that, was it creating an issue at Douglas Road that made them open Parker?
It predates me even, but we can...
Yeah, I remember, I remember when it was a dead end. So the school has in effect made that a one-way road because they have a do-not-enter sign when you come down Melrose. You cannot enter that parking lot off of Melrose. You have to go around and come down Parker Court. So they forced all their traffic down Parker Court now. So that's, that's the problem. They say it's not their problem, but is their problem? They created the problem. And they did that because they created a bus lane in front of the school. So with the bus lane there, there's not enough room for two-way traffic.
Right.
So I understand completely what they're saying.
In saying that school buses are driving on the wrong side of the road as well. The school buses are, they're on the wrong side. I had today wayside ministry or wayside missions on the wrong side. But what really flirts me is the school buses are on the wrong side. And you are creating a dangerous situation for the kids.
Yeah. Alright, we will definitely look into it. I know the village staff has a lot of the history on here, which we can get to the board. And then if you can leave your contact information, both of you, we can get back to you. Did you, did you sign in or write it in there? That'd be a good way to do that, or if somebody has a card as well. And thank you for coming, by the way.
Thank you. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Alright, anything else for public comment? Anybody? Okay, moving on to the last item for public participation is the recognition of our Montgomery Police Officers. Chief?
Thank you, Mr. President. As you know, I always enjoy coming up here giving you good news about our police officers and tonight is one of those nights. So before I do anything else, I'd like to call the first two officers down here, Officer Kevin Carner and Luke Lindholm. So as we're walking down, I'm going to tell you a story that occurred in 2,400 block of our favorite road, Mayfield Road. One night, we received a panicked 911 call from a spouse saying, my husband is having a heart attack and medical distress. Of course, our guys get there, expedient as possible. They go in the house and sure enough, there's an individual lying on his bed with an apparent cardiac problem. Because of these two officers' training, they jumped into lifesaving mode, broke out some lifesaving measures, employed CPR, kept his heart going till medics got on the scene, they boxed him up and they carried him away. So tonight, I get to tell you that these two officers directly involved in saving one of our citizens' lives. And I would like you to read you, I'd like to read you the citation. Excuse me, got to break my cheaters off for this. For Officer Luke Lindholm and Kevin Carner, while performing duties as police officer for the Village of Montgomery, officers responded to an individual in medical distress in the village. Upon arrival on the scene, officer observed an adult male unconscious, not breathing, and in need of emergency medical aid. Officers quickly identified the symptoms of the individual. He was exhibiting administered lifesaving measures by performing CPR. Officer's expertise and decisive actions were well beyond that of the average response of an officer. If not for these actions, it would be unlikely that that individual, one of our citizens, would have survived. These officers are credited themselves, the Montgomery Police Department, and the citizens of Montgomery, Illinois. Thank you, gentlemen. Alright, now hold up, hold up. Got a couple more guys I need to recognize. Because you all know it, that these guys are part of a team. And we deploy our shifts as teams. So two more guys want to come down here. Number one is Sergeant Gonzalez, which you didn't know there's heaven. Come on down, Gonzalez. And unfortunately... Unfortunately, Josh Kleeman just had to go to a crash on Douglas, so he had to be out on this team event. So what you don't know, while these two guys are responding to the scene, doing their emergency stuff, it was Sergeant Gonzalez and Officer Kleeman. Officer Kleeman spoke to the wife, got her a calm down, got some very pertinent information about his history, what's going on, what happened. And then Sergeant Gonzalez, of course, their direct guide and supervisor, the whole thing. So these two also need to be commended for their actions in saving someone's life. Thank you very much. And then, to culminate the whole thing, they were trained, what, a month before by Officer Pruskerik on CPR. So this is truly a team effort. And of course, you can see all the support from all the other officers that are here. Your police officers are doing a magnificent job. They do a wonderful job for our community. Okay, and I also, I know that Kendall stole some of my thunder here. We couldn't get to these scenes if it wasn't for Mark's crew, the last two weeks, out there plowing the streets for us. Thank you, Mark, I want to publicly say that. We didn't know Luke's got a whole million kids here.
Okay, ready? One, two, three.
You don't have to, but...
Hey buddy. Hi. Say yay daddy! Yay dad!
That's awesome.
Awesome, thank you. Hey buddy. Smile, Luke, please. Raise. Here. Got it.
And unless there's any other questions for me, that's all I have.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Alright, I can take just a quick like 30 seconds here. I know that many of you have to get back to work. So I appreciate all the hard work that you do, showing up for your team. And enjoy your evening, stay safe out there. Sorry. Well, we'll continue. I'll move into consent, read the items, and entertain a motion for approval. We have minutes of the January 8th Village Board meeting, accounts payable for January 22nd, and then the refuse report for December of '23.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Go ahead and call the roll.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Alright, and that carries five zero. Rolling into items for separate action, the first item is Resolution 2024-001, authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement with the Fox Valley Park District for the US Route 30 pedestrian bridge and shared-use path. And then the section number, go ahead Jeff.
Thank you. Well, this IGA just sets out the responsibilities of us and the Park District for the design, construction, ongoing maintenance, and the cost-sharing for the bridge. The Park District did pass this at their January 8th meeting, so they have adopted it. With that, we're happy to answer any questions.
Thanks.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, discussion? Alright, go ahead. Hundred percent. Go ahead.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
That carries five zero. Item B is Ordinance 2062, declaring personal property owned by the village surplus and authorizing its disposal. This is waiver of first passage on second. Director Wolf?
Thank you, President Rowley. So as the board is aware, the village has previously done this in the past where we surplus used equipment as it's being replaced or plans to be replaced. So in this instance, there are three pieces of equipment on this list tonight that the village is requesting to be able to sell. We have previously used a third-party vendor for an online auction system, which we plan on using for these three items tonight. So if there's any questions from the village board, I'm happy to answer them at this time.
I have a question. The Vactron and the LeafVac specifically, if these are being declared surplus, are they being replaced?
So the Vactron trailer was replaced by the Vector truck earlier this year.
Okay.
So that piece of equipment has already been in, so that's why we're surplusing that one. It'll be put on the auction block immediately. The LeafVac component was replaced by the swaploader truck that we received this year. So that's no longer needed.
With the trees and the west side of Montgomery being approximately 20 years old now and the trees being more mature, do we, with declaring the surplus, do we still have the capability to do leaf collection with the larger trees?
So currently, we have this particular unit that we're looking to surplus tonight is actually our backup unit. So we've always had, in the instance of breakdowns, we've had the backup unit. So this unit is going away and then our current unit that we're using, which is a tow behind unit, will replace that as a backup. The new truck that we got, we're going to a single-man truck, which is more productive, less labor, but also allows us to be able to run that truck for longer periods of time than the old truck. So we're looking to pick up efficiency with the new swaploader, single-man unit.
Okay, thank you.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Go ahead, Debbie.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Okay, that carries five nothing. Item C is award of a contract to Dynamic Industrial Services, Inc. for the Fairfield Elevator Storage Tank Rehab Project. Engineer Ott?
Thank you, Mr. President. Staff opened bids for this project on January 3rd and has received six bids and we're recommending award to Dynamic Industrial Services in the amount of $1,176,950, which is 37.3% under engineer's estimate. I'm happy to take any questions.
I have one. Is this a vendor that we've used before?
We have not, the village has not used them before, nor have we as an office used them before either, but we did call their references and everything checked out. They've done tanks of this size before and everyone had good things to say. And we have heard of them before, we just have not had any jobs with them.
Okay, thank you.
Can you, because I know this is going to, this is going to come up. If it's a full blast and repaint, what safety precautions are we taking to prevent any of the blasted paint or residue or anything from spreading to neighboring homes?
Yeah, so they will be putting up full containment, so there'll be like a skirt that comes up and down when they're doing the blasting. So that will, that's basically what they're doing to try and contain as much as possible. There is, you know, a potential that some small particulate does escape that, but it's going to capture the majority of the item, or the blasting.
How long do we anticipate the work to take until completion?
So the, according to the contract, we left the schedule fairly open-ended for them to get the best price for the village. But once they start, they can only have the tank down for 90 days. So we have not talked to them yet about when they want to start, but when they do start, the water tower is only allowed to be down for 90 days.
Is that, I'm sorry, is that a typical timeframe of 90 days?
Yeah.
So is the water tower drained?
Yes.
Yep. Got it. And is it internal and external?
Yeah, so the external is full blast and repaint, the internal wet is full blast and repaint, and the internal dry is spot blast and repaint.
There will be testing of water and those things that are going into this prior to it being released back into the service?
Yeah, before it goes back in the service, they're required to get passing samples and disinfect.
Okay, thank you.
Is this the first time this?
This is the first time this tower has been repainted.
So what is the life expectancy of a paint job?
Something like this would be 20 to 25 years, maybe longer if you do, you know, periodic cleaning, which we, that the village does, so hopefully longer than that.
Is this due to just, is paint flaking off? Or is there some sort of growth, algae, mold, anything like that, that?
So the tower's about 20 years old, so the original coating is about at its life expectancy. But what we discovered when we cleaned and cleaned the tank a couple years ago was that there were spots where the paint flaked off the tank. So there are spots that are down to the bare steel right now that are open to the elements, which is why we want to get it painted as quickly as possible.
What is the anticipated start time?
We have not talked to the contractor yet, so, I mean, general painting season is mid-April to late October, because they do have temperature and humidity requirements. So we do not know yet what the timeframe is. We have not talked to the contractor about that.
Does that put like a big strain on our system in the summer, having the east side tank down or west side down?
It can be, but again, we have a pretty robust system, so we're able to move, manipulate water from the central zone out to the west zone, so we do have that capability.
No pressure loss or anything like that expected?
No.
It's been down before for cleaning.
Cleaning.
The, what happens if they go beyond the ninety days? Are liquidated damages or?
Yes, yeah.
And what is their coating warranty?
I don't know off the top of my head, but I can get you an answer on that.
And I didn't notice it in the specs, but are they going to do holiday testing on it? Or are they just going to put down so many mills of thickness and?
No, we, we have a gentleman in our office who's NACE certified, who will be out there onsite verifying that they get the proper mills on the tank.
Okay. Yeah, I, when this tank was first installed and painted, I, there was something with a clear coat on it from original paint. I don't know if they missed spots, if the clear coat was bad, if they didn't put on thick enough. But if you look at the south side of the tower, there was some graffiti on the tower at one time and JECO came in and just sandblasted and recoded that one section. And boy, what a difference from the rest of the towers. I just want to make sure that, yeah, that somebody's out there keeping an eye on this and doing holiday testing and making sure that, that they're clear coating the entire tower. Because I've, yeah, you could really see it when the sun was not out, when it was cloudy, that there were sections of the tower that were, were not coated properly, I think, with the clear coat, so.
Yeah, so we've moved to a different coating system, so there is no more clear coat. It's a different finish coat, which makes it much more obvious if they've done it or not. So, yeah.
Still Tenemic or?
Yeah. We off, we allowed both Tenemic or Sherwin-Williams, not sure who the contractor is going to use.
Okay.
Anybody else have any very detailed questions? Oh, sorry. What was the question? Go ahead, you got any more questions?
Oh, no. I made a motion.
A nice second.
Oh, look at that. While you were talking.
I know, while I'm joking around.
We were multitasking.
I know, right?
Any other comments or questions? Go ahead Debbie.
Trusty Guyer.
Yes.
Trusty Spurling.
Yes.
Trusty Baumann.
Yes.
Trusty Youngerman.
Yes.
Thank you.
That carries, thanks Chris. All right, last item for separate action is Ordinance 2063, calling for the closing of railroad crossing located on Light Road and approving a highway rail grade crossing closure agreement. This is first reading. Sonia?
Yes, thank you. As you may recall, we annexed the Light Road property as part of the Caris-Rivago development earlier this year. The house on there has been demoed and that parcel will become part of the detention area for the Rivago property. Since there is nothing for the road and the crossing to serve, we are proposing to close that crossing, which BNSF is very happy about. So this is the first step in that process, is passing this ordinance and entering into the agreement. Then we will work on the permitting and getting the actual closure taken care of.
I have a question. Is BNSF aware that it's no longer a viable crossing, so that they're not blowing when they go through there anymore?
Um, I don't think they have the option to do that. I think it is a crossing, so somebody could go across it, so they still.
All right, so it's not closed yet?
Yes, correct.
Yes, so once it's, once the roadways are abandoned and they remove the actual crossing itself, burials will go in and then at that point, they'll put the directive through, so.
It feels like just yesterday, we were running that project for the ICC to improve this crossing for the one house.
Yeah.
Yeah, and now, now, somewhere you can hear, you can actually hear Denny Lee somewhere losing it. Right? He was, he had a tough time with it then, so.
That one house has emailed me eight to ten times to make sure, because she was concerned about this crossing and with the development going in, and I've assured her that they were going to relinquish this crossing and no longer use it. So I can now email her and say that that is in the works, so that's awesome, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thanks Sonia. Any objection to putting this on consent at a future meeting?
No.
Perfect. Okay. Thanks, so moving on to the items for discussion is the text amendments for the UDO, Director Abt.
Um, yes, so we have another batch of amendments to the UDO that we are working on. Several of the updates are related to the EV readiness community initiative that we are a part of, and some are additional cleanup items that we've identified during permit reviews and site plan reviews. But one of the major policy changes being proposed is a new use of a food truck court with the rust stop that we had this past year over at 111 Lake Street and with the property at Montgomery and Lafayette, looking at allowing food truck courts, specifically the only food trucks that are really addressed is in our temporary use section of the UDO. So we need to come up with a new use and regulations for it to be able to allow that, that kind of use. So we're looking for some feedback from the board on some draft use standards that we've prepared. We looked at some other communities across the country that do regulate and allow and zone for food truck courts. So we use that as a basis to begin. So we are classifying food truck courts as a principal use, as a permitted use in the Mill District, the B1 and B2 districts, as well as the M1 and M2 districts. And for food truck courts as accessory use, such as with the rust stop, because it has the main use there for KWCC, but then they have the rust up on the back half of the property. We have classified those as special uses in the Mill District, B1, B2, M1 and M2 zoning districts. So I do have attached the draft standards for you to reference. But as this is a new use, we're looking to ensure that any issues or concerns the board might have with following them are addressed before we move into public hearing on the actual amendments. So we're looking for some feedback, specifically with the use classification. Again, with it being a principal use, allowing it as a permitted use. The rationale behind that recommendation is that for underutilized properties, such as the Primos Taco Site, which is the one on Montgomery and Lafayette, this provides fewer barriers to utilizing the property for a higher purpose than just a vacant property. Pros, again, it's permitted use activates that underutilized property with minimal barriers to allow it to be a commercial use and increase the EAV, as well as bringing some sales tax dollars to the village. Cons, is a permitted use, the village would be limited to using enforcement tools like fines and adjudication if the user is violating the zoning standards or other village codes. A hearing officer would need to make the determination that the use is not a permitted use due to failure to meet our use standards in order for us to be able to require that use to discontinue. Whereas if it was classified as a special use, if it violates those standards, we have the right to revoke that special use for failure to meet, meet the standards. So this, there's still an option, it's just a little bit more work on staff level to be able to do that. Staff is recommending that food truck courts as an accessory use be classified as special uses, and the rationale behind that is to be consistent with our stationary food vendor requirements, which requires a license approved by the Village Board. So if we were allow them at, by right, it would completely bypass that licensing requirement and be more permissive than we are for individual food trucks on a site. So that's the rationale behind making it a, a special use. One of the things we are looking at is requiring bathroom facilities for food truck courts. We're recommending that they provide bathroom facilities and hand washing stations on the site. We are proposing to allow portable toilets to meet this requirement, provided they're screened on three sides and located as far from any residentially zoned property as possible. For accessory food truck courts, we're proposing to waive this requirement if they provide a written agreement with the property owner that allows the food truck court customers to be able to use the bathroom facilities that are on site and that those facilities are open during the same hours as the food truck court. So looking for some feedback on the board, if we're comfortable with allowing that waiver for the accessory ones, and also if we're comfortable with allowing, you know, a couple of portable toilets on there, provided they're screened on the site, so that we're providing those facilities. Another issue is outdoor sales. So we are proposing to allow additional outdoor sales, i.e. non-food, non-food truck sales. So if somebody wants to be out there selling honey or something else, you know, along those lines, as accessory to the food truck court, provided they abide by our outdoor sales requirements that we have for temporary outdoor sales in our UDO, that that would be allowed without having to actually get a temporary use permit. It would just be allowed as part of the food truck court use. And it wouldn't have any sort of duration limit, like currently, we do limit outdoor sales to a specific number of days within a calendar year. So looking for some feedback on that, also with outdoor entertainment. So we're proposing to allow outdoor entertainment, including live music, in accordance with the regulations of the temporary outdoor entertainment requirements, which requires a temporary use permit. So it would still have to abide by that, but we'd be specifically saying they could do that, but they do have to get a temporary use permit for that live entertainment. It does require that they cannot exceed seven consecutive days and you're only allowed two permits within a year. So that's our current regulations on outdoor entertainment. And then the last but not least is about licensing. So we're proposing to exempt food truck courts from our stationary food vendor licensing requirements. They would still need to provide proof that they have their health department certifications and insurance and that the vehicles are registered to a food truck court manager. However, in an effort to keep this as flexible and barrier-free as possible, we're not proposing that each food truck within the food court have to have that stationary food vendor license. Licensing is an avenue the village can use for enforcement. So for accessory food truck courts, the special use allows for similar oversight and enforcement for the licensing. And the special use can be revoked for violations. However, with the principal use, food truck court is a permitted use, any violation falls generally under our zoning enforcement, where violations can be taken through that adjudication process that I mentioned earlier, and fines can be assessed. The hearing officer, again, would need to determine that the use as operating is not permitted due to failure to meet our standards before we can take any sort of enforcement action to make the use stop. So, and last but not least, parking lot and improved surfaces. So we are stating that they do have to provide parking for their customers and that it has to be on an improved surface, but we're looking for some feedback on whether the board will be open to allowing gravel as an improved, as an improved surface for the parking of both customers and the food trucks themselves. So again, just trying to get your feedback on some of those items and some of the other things, and then we can discuss further or move forward.
And the gravel would be for the permitted and the special use?
Correct.
For principal and accessory, okay.
I would say it probably wouldn't be needed as much as an accessory one, because there's probably an existing parking lot people would be able to use.
Right, but somebody could just throw down some gravel next to their parking lot and call it good, then. That'd be, so I have a couple of concerns. Some of it I need a little bit of convincing on, but I think if there is pavement down, that we would be expecting them to utilize that, not adding gra, you know, gravel to, as a secondary use. Couple of things. So what about, the only thing that really scares me is the principal use by right. I get, I get the point there. Is there any caveat for immediately adjacent to residential? Like if you have residential properties right next to you, is this allowed by right? And, and we must, we, staff has to make sure that our standards are pretty well dialed in, because that's, you know, it's a vacant piece property, but then they can just start using it for all kinds of food truck stuff. The other one would be a minimum lot size requirement. If that's a thing that somebody has done before, I don't, I don't want somebody to say, "Well, I have a tiny vacant lot in between these two houses down here, I'm going to start doing a food truck court kind of thing." And is, is there any regulation that would, you know, govern that? Well, I guess residential wouldn't count, but you know.
Right, so I didn't really see anything that was a minimum size for the property itself. Obviously, we've written it to have regulations on there that you can only have as many food trucks as you can really fit and provide the required parking on the site and still allow for, you know, circulation and emergency access. So that's something that kind of has to be looked at on a case-by-case basis.
They have to have provide off-street parking?
Yes.
Got it, so it will need to be a pretty decent-sized lot to have a certain amount of parking space.
If it's going to be, if it's going to have more than, you know, two or three, yeah.
Yeah, I've got some questions too. With the facilities, bathroom facilities screened on at least three sides, which direction is the open side going to face? Towards the street, towards the house, towards the back?
Right, so I think we would be trying to have it open more towards the middle, towards where the parking area is, or towards where any sort of seating area for, for the food truck court would be.
Okay, I just know.
So which may be visible from the street, but you know, the point is to try to keep it away from, especially if it's adjacent to any sort of residential, so that it's away from that.
Is there a reason for the three sides and not a four side, maybe a three side? And then the, the four side is a wall, but it's set back, if you know what I'm saying? So you go on either side, so you can't see the bathroom facilities, no matter which way it's facing?
Well, I was thinking of it more as it allows the bathroom doors to open, for people to be able to get into them, as opposed to having to create sort of a maze to get into said bathrooms, it's just sort of immediately accessible.
Yeah, but you know what I'm talking about, right? You've got the three sides are fully enclosed. The porta-potties go in there, and then there's like a wall that's like six feet out from that, so that you can't see the toilets. Some park districts and stuff have things like that. The, the power permanent hookups, it doesn't address generators? Are you going to allow the food vendors to use either accessory generators or generators on their trucks?
Generally, building department felt that we didn't really want generators on there, so trying to provide that permanent hookup.
Okay. Another one is for food truck principal use, you say there's got to be at least two mobile vendors, but for the accessory use, it has to be three mobile vendors. Why the, why the difference?
Again, trying to differentiate, because one is a special use and one is a permitted use. Again, just trying to kind of differentiate what is one versus the other. So we increased the number to three, to three for those versus two for.
For the accessory use? Okay, and then you also have on here about a, a log that, let's see, food trucks operate the site and the days in which they operate there, said log shall be made available to village upon request. Why wouldn't we just request that log in advance, so we don't, if there's a problem, we're not chasing an individual trying to get that log, so we have all the information? I'm just trying to head off potential problems.
Yeah, I see that, on the other hand, information that I have is information that I have to retain and information that is voidable, so.
It's on a computer, it's in a file. The, you know, I'm not.
I see both sides to that, so, yeah.
I'm not, I'm not big on this anyway. The, and then as far as the primary use, you said with a, with the accessory use, with special use, we can pull their special use if they're not in compliance, but with the primary use, we can't do that. Is there a way that, and then you said you were not, we're not going to require permits for each individual food truck, but there's a manager of the food court? Could we require the manager to, to be issued a license? And then if the food court comes in disrepair, they're not following the rules, then we just pull his license and then, then everybody's got to pull out the food court instead of going through adjudication and all that? Just be a little bigger of a hammer if we're starting to have problems with a, with an individual food court. That's, I'm with President Brolli, I mean, I'm a little hesitant about just giving somebody a permitted use to pop a food court in.
Yeah, I think licensing the manager is something we'd have to look into, because it is different than, you know, what we know we can do with the actual food vendors. So we can look and see whether or not that's something we can do under the non-home rule authority.
I should say, I like that you're trying to lower the, the threshold to try and do something cool. Right, anytime we can do that, that's, that's awesome, I like that. So I think it's just fine tuning the, like, the performance standards requirements that you have, like submit a site plan for approval, that kind of thing. I think would be, even if it's handwritten, that would be helpful. But it's a creative way to find some, to put some of our vacant property to good use. If you've been to any of these, you know, food truck parks, you know, I know I saw on HGTV or something once, like Austin has a ton of these things that people just go every day to eat. I'm not saying that we will be that, but let's dream, so.
The, the concept sounds great. Yeah, and what you see on TV, you see the good ones?
Yeah.
The high-performing ones, not, not the bad performing ones. I think I have a little pause or concern about other, other participating vendors in addition to the food truck, those selling things, where this is going to turn into during the summer, like a open-air flea market throughout the, the summer, or an unorganized or a non village. Yeah, sanctioned type of farmer's market. So I, I don't know, I have pause on having this large, I understand what you're doing with this, this concept, but it almost sounds like it's, it's a type of event or purpose that without that really focused lens from the village on each. that without that really focused lens from the village on each occurring weekend or event, that it can get a little out of hand, or maybe the use could be a little bit misappropriated? Like, are the accessory vendors, are they going to be within a certain type of product? Or, I, I mean, I don't know, can you do open-air tattoos? I mean, can a tattoo artist set up a tent? And you, I, I mean, realistically, I mean, what, what's a limit to the type of vendor that could be out, and what are they gonna be able to sell and not sell?
Yeah.
Depending on location, I see it just going more south than north.
If those were special uses, I'd feel a little bit more comfortable, because then they'd have to come here and say what they're gonna do for the, for the sales that are not the food trucks. I don't know. This is also the first that I've thought about this, so.
And then is this sort of a stepping stone to eliminating the, the street eats event? Because if you have these, these trucks set up and these food courts operating all the time, it kind of feels like it takes away from lining up six or eight food courts down here by the park and trying to get people out there on that one day.
I mean, to build, to build on a couple of things you said, if this takes off and we don't need to village-run certain events like that, a farmer's market that, I'm all for it, right? If the, the business in the, in the community starts generating its own events, I think that's great, we wanna hop onto that, right? Maybe we wouldn't need to, maybe we'd morph then in what we do. Any other comments?
Yeah, could you go back to the live entertainment portion? What, my concern is, I have several concerns, but let's talk about that first. What stops somebody from setting this up and having music going all the time? And my concern is if it's close to a residential.
Mm-hmm.
How, what stops somebody from having the music going all day on a Sunday, or all day on a Saturday, in the summertime, when, you know, people are typically home, trying to relax, or, you know, maybe they're having a graduation party, and we have a, a food court, you know, just a short distance away from their home, and the music from there is carrying over to their, to the person who's trying to sit outside? What, what recourse do we have with that?
I mean, I suppose, depending on how loud it is, you know, as a basic, we do have our, our noise ordinance, so somebody can certainly call, and police can come out, and if it is considered excessively noisy during certain hours, they can tell them to turn it off, because they have to abide by all of our, our village ordinances and village codes. But certainly, if that's something that we're concerned about, we can put, we can add regulations that no amplified music is allowed, if we wanna do that, absent you getting a temporary use permit for live, wouldn't be live entertainment, I suppose, but we can put something in there.
How, how would that be different than a regular residential home?
Well, exactly. I, I hear what you're saying. I, I'm not comfortable with a lot that's here, and I, I don't think that surprises you. The, and I cannot remember, what was the other one, the permitted use? I'm not interested in that at all. If, if, I, I would be more open to having everything have to be a special use. I, I, that's my main thing right now. I really need to kind of go back and get my head around all this, to see what, what I would go for and what I won't. But I don't want anything that where it's sort of, they can use by right. Nope, I'm not for that at all.
So I, again, chiming in and rearing some of the other trustees' comments, I actually think the live entertainment portion is, is good. Again, concern about somebody not doing live entertainment, but actually, you know, having music blurring or, you know, going on all day. So I, I like the live entertainment portion, because you could, now you can have that, but it's live entertainment. It's not just a radio playing. And then again, I also like the special use portion of this, where we can kind of police it. I feel like if we do that, and it goes well, we could always transition, because we know where it's at. If we go the other way, you know, it's awfully hard to try to tighten it back up. If we start tight, we could always pivot and, and then make it a permitted use if we see that it's working well. It's like a, a teacher in school. It's better to be tough in the beginning of the year than try to get tough halfway through the year. So it's better for us to set the ground rules upfront.
But if it goes well, and we change it to a permitted use, and then it goes to hell, do we still have the opportunity to switch it back to a special use?
Not for the people that have already established the permitted use. You would be able to for those going forward, but once it vests as a permitted use, it would remain a permitted use. However, you know, again, they still do have perfor, in that case, if you were to make it permitted use, there would still be the permitted use standards they'd have to meet, but as Sonia had mentioned, it is far more difficult. Once it's permitted, you're going through the adjudication process externally versus being able to pull it internally.
So one dog, and it ruins it for everybody.
You had stated Montgomery and Lafayette?
I'm sorry, could you say that again?
You had mentioned a location at Montgomery and Lafayette?
Yes.
Is that, I mean, it just looks like an open corner, but it is surrounded by, there's a few houses, it looks like there's the, the trailer park behind it, some houses across the street. And looking at that, that piece of land, have you determined as to how many possible vendors or trucks would fit in there with parking and with bathrooms?
So he is hoping to be able to fit four to six, so he's put together a site plan that's currently under review for us to take a look at and see if he's meeting our parking requirements while still providing the trucks. So it's looking more like it's gonna be four trucks, but there might be ability to push a couple more in there, so.
Cool. And you have not brought this to plan commission yet?
No.
Cool.
And one thing I, I did not mention was the gravel lot. I'm not in favor of gravel lots.
And I understand the goal there is trying to lower the threshold for utilizing vacant property as opposed to, I mean, the, there was a couple at Montgomery and Bangs last year that I'd went, I went to. There was one or two there that is an existing gravel lot. I think that requiring somebody to pave that, or maybe even get a, a permanent electric service, might be enough to, might be hu, too high of a bar for a food truck court to overcome. So I'm less concerned about it.
The, I'm sorry, I had one, one other comment. Again, I, I really wanna go back and just sort of wrap my head around all the things you've proposed. I don't know how comfortable I am with allowing it in Mill District either. That's my comment. I think we've had some pretty tight regulations for the Mill District, and I just don't know that I would want this here. I'm done.
Cool. All right, any other comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. Anything new or unfinished?
One more, that does, that is a lot of information, a lot of work. So regardless of the comments and the frustration, the crazy look on my face, I mean, that's a lot of work, so I do appreciate the work that you put into all of this.
And I'm assuming the plan commission conversation is also gonna be pretty detailed and fruitful. They put a lot of thought into this kind of stuff, so.
Yeah, so thank you for the information.
Okay.
Anything? Anything unfinished?
Yeah.
Director Wolf, first, on the snow removal, outstanding job. I've heard nothing but good. A few people, eh, some mailboxes went down, but with a heavy wet snow like that, that's expected. You have some updates?
I do. So you had asked for an updated quote for some pedestrian, light-up pedestrian crossing signs, particular for Lakewood Creek Elementary School. So we did get a quote from our traffic control vendor. So the quote is roughly about $23,000 for two signs. So just to clarify, two signs would be one crossing, one for each direction of traffic. So Public Works did do a quick kind of analysis of not only Lakewood Creek, but other schools in town, and so we would recommend that if we moved forward with putting up these signs, that we would move forward with four locations for two of the schools would be our recommendation moving forward, so that was just our.
The amount that you said is 23,000?
Correct.
Twenty-three with three zeros?
That's correct.
For a sign.
And that's the quote, so just to clarify, too, that's just the quote for the materials? So the actual installation of the fi, signs, which would constitute concrete foundations, and Public Works staff actively erecting the signs, that cost is not factored into this.
Did we spend $23,000 on the red LED lights that go around those stop signs at Lakewood and Gordon?
We did not. So those are a different application. So those stop signs are mounted on TELSPAR, standard TELSPAR posts. These signs are, go on a four-inch to six-inch diameter traffic signal post, so a different application. They're much heavier, larger signs than the stop signs, so they constitute that type of mounting system.
Why is that needed as opposed to the LED lights that are on the stop signs?
So they're different, so the pedestrian signs, so there's two different styles that you can do, and what we did, there's a pedestrian sign that is illuminated on the exterior of the sign with small LEDs, but then there's also a feature where you can add the flashing strobe pattern. So the mechanical portion for accommodating that, the, basically the, the box that goes along with that is so heavy that a standard TELSPAR support post can't hold that weight. So then you have to upgrade and go to the larger diameter traffic signal post, which requires a concrete foundation. So all those things add up.
Can you get the, get an example of where that thing is installed?
Oh, there's a lot of them installed throughout the city of Aurora, Naperville, and there's many locations where they are.
At $23,000 each.
Twenty-three a crossing, right?
Correct.
So that was, that's two signs.
So each crossing would be 23,000.
And you're recommending four total?
Based upon what we looked at and the concerns that were addressed, yes. Now, that was just at a quick, we have not gone to Krug and looked at any issues there. Now, it doesn't sound like that's a pedestrian crossing issue, particularly in Nicholson School, we didn't see any pedestrian crossing issues there. Most of the residential is on the east side of the road, so there's not a lot of students crossing there, so we didn't factor, again, it was a very quick analysis.
Yeah.
But again, considering the cost, we didn't wanna get too far into the weeds with evaluating these.
We could probably pay for these crossings with the citations that need to be written over at Krug.
It's possible.
So are you proposing the signs at Lakewood Creek where the crossing guards are now positioned?
Correct.
Is it solar?
Correct, yes.
So I have a question about that with, like at Lakewood Creek. So we're talking about two signs at Lakewood Creek and two at, or are you, all four of them at Lakewood Creek?
McDowell would be the second school.
McDowell would be the other, be the other school. So which of the two pedestrian crossings are we gonna put signs at?
Well, that's, that's a whole nother topic of conversation.
I mean, because there's, there's two there that have equal volume of traffic.
Again, and I should back up, Public Works in, in our evaluation, we would recommend that none of the signs be installed. Again, as I think Trustee Bowman just pointed out, there, there's already crossing guards at two of these locations. The other side of this is the, the issues that are happening there, we've already increased signage at Lakewood Creek specifically, and we have met with the assistant principal there multiple times. To my knowledge, they were satisfied with the, what is being done. Again, people complying with the rules of the road, complying with not using their cellphones, not parking in areas that are posted, are, are issues that flashing signs are not going to address.
Let's chew on this for a little bit.
Yeah, I, it's, I get complaints from people all across the village about, oh, I'm, people are speeding down my street, people are doing this. But it's the people, the people who are blowing through these crossings and, and not adhering to the crossing guards and stuff, are the people who live in these neighborhoods.
And just dropped their kid off.
And the people who are complaining to me, saying, "People are, are speeding down my street." Well, slow down for the damn crosswalk.
It, it is a challenge, and I do just wanna point out, obviously, public safety is our number-one goal, and something that we look at, but again, when we're looking at spending village, you know, funds, we wanna make sure that it's appropriate and it's gonna achieve the objective. And again, in these instances, we can, we can litter the village with signage, whether it's school zones, whether it's, you know, mid-road crossings, and it, it just comes down to the effectiveness of them versus the cost, and that's something that, again, is, is just our recommendation, but obviously, you know, it's the purview of the village board, how you wanna persist and move forward with that. I specifically have seen the crossing that's located at, near the Prisco Center, where the Fox River Trail is, right across from Fox Valley Park District, same thing, lines, signs are flashing, pedestrians are starting to cross, traffic is regardless to it and continues to move through. So you're, you're, you're trying to curb the habits of people, and ultimately, enforcement is the, the ultimate answer behind that, and not the signage. But in some cases, it can help.
My concern is that it, the signage could provide a false sense of security. There's a flashing sign, of course I can go. And then, you know, somebody's not paying attention, so it's a false sense of security. I mean, I, I've been involved in traffic safety at Lakewood Creek for the better part of 20 years, and it's an ongoing issue. You know, we've had the police out there, and it wasn't until Denny Schmidt, I said, "Come out without a squad car." And he stood there and watched as we were standing there drinking a cup of coffee, and he said, "These people are crazy." I said, "That's the problem. Your officers come and don't see what we see on a Wednesday afternoon, because they're in uniform and have a squad car there. Come out and see what it looks like when they're not being watched." And then people, their true behavior comes out, and he was absolutely floored. So we did some things, and we changed some drop-off and pickup over there to try to make it a little safer, but I just think that the flashing signs, forget about the cost, that doesn't matter. I think it provides a false sense of security to people, especially when, you know, when school's in session, it's one thing. People are a little bit more aware, but on a summer day, little Johnny decides he's gonna walk across that street, somebody's clipping by going 25 miles an hour, and it's a problem. So I just think the false sense of security is my downside to that whole process.
Is a CSO able to ticket or enforce?
Sorry, could you speak up, please, if I didn't hear you?
Is a CSO able to ticket or enforce traffic violations?
We are out there every day, just so you know. We have written several tickets out there. This is an ongoing problem we've had at every school, especially during inclement weather, just as their experience over at Krug. We did send officers out there. The officer's right, we can only ticket so many people at a time. We've done it out on Lakewood. Problem is the parents in the school. Now with Krug, we just identified this, the school's going to send out notices to the parents. This is a parenting kid drop-off problem. They opened Krug several years ago to make it easier to access that roadway, just as they've changed the traffic pattern at Lakewood. I think they've done that twice and added a completely another parking lot just for this purpose. We're out there, and Matt, I can tell you, every morning Sergeant Stransky's out there, and if we have any other car in the afternoon, we're always out there. Yes, behavior is different when the police are present. We have put on marks out there, and we've wrote some tickets. Human behavior is, I wish I could fix everybody's human behavior. I just can't. We will work out a solution, and we'll continue to do it, but I don't think there is a perfect solution except not allowing parents to drop off their kids, and I know that's never gonna happen.
What, what other updates did you have?
That's all I had.
Thanks, Mark. No trucks behind schedule?
No. Trucks in the, in the queue for purchase.
We haven't, we haven't approved any. It's just a matter of time.
All right, anything else? Down there, anything? Okay. Thanks, Mark. All right, moving on. Item nine is, would entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss the selection of a person to fill a, a public office as defined in this act, including the vacancy in a public office when the public body is given the power to appoint under law or ordinance. And the rest.
Second?
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marasek.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Yeah. Keep thinking we're missing somebody, and we are. All right, so I'll call the meeting back to order. Would like to go back into our, our item for separate action, number 10. As you guys know, the board deliberated for a while and, and considered seven candidates to fill our vacancy at the village board. I just wanted to say, I sincerely appreciated the process. I appreciated the seven members of our community that really stuck their neck out. You know, those that have been involved, those that have been involved in other assets of our village or other avenues. There's definitely seven people that care about the work that they do and they have the heart, which probably is the single most reason why it took us a long, a long time to kinda talk through the process. So my hope is that while only one person, as I said this a few hours ago, there can only be one appointment tonight to fill this vacancy, that all six of the remaining individuals find some avenue to get involved in our village. I think I speak for everybody in the board here, or everybody in the room on the village's behalf, that we're always looking for stellar residents that wanna get involved to make their community better. It's the only reason why any of us are here, so. Unless anybody else has anything to add. At this time, we would like to, I guess, read the next item, which is the appointment of a new trustee, Ben Brzaska, to fill the vacant position on the village board, the term going through April 30th of 2025.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, call the roll.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Bowman?
No.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes. Carrie's? Thank you. Real quick, future meetings, you can see them on here. And we will be posting, at this time, we all have two vacancies on the Plan Commission due to Ben's pending resignation. So we will be reaching out to the six individuals, but also reaching out broadly to see candidate for that. So with that, entertain a motion adjourned?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, call the roll.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Bowman?
Yes.
And we're adjourned. Thank you.